Looks like it just started. Which is good.
I guess it does matter that it's lowercase. I tried uppercase. It wouldn't let me type in the key or the target.
For the, like where you typed YouTube or one of the codes?
Well, I typed in YouTube with a capital Y, capital T.
Mm hmm.
And it wouldn't let me fill in any other. Anything else?
Actually, it just says no. I don't know if it started. Hmm, I usually type it like that, I think. Maybe it does need to be lowercase.
Says live?
It does say live?
Yeah, it says live in the top left or top right, I mean.
Oh, it does say live.
Yeah, I can hear. I just pulled it up.
Okay.
Discussing whether or not it's live.
Is there the vis- the video Abby?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Visual and audio.
Cool.
So, um, we are live.
Server one, you know.
Be on your best behavior.
Oh my god. And I also, I think Abby, I don't know if you read it, I was gonna turn on this like closed captioning now, but then it said that I can't do that and whatever low latency is. So I was like, forget about it.
What's low latency?
I think it has something to do with the delay between the stream and input and output somehow. But it wants to default to low latency. I don't know if I want to change that.
Want me to turn on WebEx Assistant that enables captions?
Um, sure, sure, we can try that. She doesn't even have a cute name. That's so sad for her.
On Zoom, uh, one time. So I used to host like a game night with my friends on Zoom during quarantine. And because I had host features, it would say like, oh, do you want to turn on captions? And one time I said yes, and then it said, okay, assign the person who is going to transcribe the captions for you.
Oh my god.
Sweet.
That's hilarious. We did that too. We did, um, we basically did a trivia, trivia night where we took turns, because basically everyone had a roommate except for one person. And so like Mickey and I hosted one week. And we would change our names to be funny things with arrows that way, like when you were looking at the grid of people, it'd be like goofball, be like pointing at someone else.
That's very funny.
We did that for like a year.
Yeah, us too. And I think because I graduated in 2020, they just like forgot to revoke whole Zoom license for all of us. Cause I still have it and it's now 2025, so.
That's nice. You know, why not?
I did get Snapchat memories from Zoom New Year's Eve the other day.
Zoom Year's Eve?
Yeah.
Wow. I don't know who's jumped on since we started streaming, but just so Jonathan and whoever the penultimate person to get on knows, the live stream is going right now.
Thanks Mel.
Sure.
My video is not working for some reason. Let me. There we go.
So Jonathan, do you have, um, like a therapy dog now or in training?
Yeah, uh, it's a comfort dog. Um, yeah, uh, my wife and I are the caregivers. It's our churches. And so we go to like nursing homes and schools and, uh, you know, the kind of the big tragic events that are around the community. And we just got her in September, so, uh, we're just starting kind of the process, but we have one already. Uh, we don't, um, keep it, but it's a, it's another dog and she's about 10. Our comfort dog just turned two. So yeah, it's, it's gonna be a lot of fun, I think.
Maybe next week. I don't know if it'll be like a really contentious public hearing, but you know, the general public, maybe. We should save it for like what we think will be a maybe really contentious public hearing and then, then she can come.
I'll keep that in mind.
That's cool. I, um, I've seen those comfort dogs a couple of times.
Yeah.
I feel like they're always Goldens.
Yeah, uh, this particular, it's, it's with Lutheran charities. They, they just use Goldens. So, uh, this ours is named Zion.
Cute.
And then the other, uh, the other comfort dog is Tabby.
Fun. Yeah, that's probably that same circle of comfort dogs that I've seen those too, so.
Yeah. Do you remember the names of any of them that you've seen?
Oh. No, I feel like there would be usually like a, a boy dog and a girl dog.
Uh huh.
We, uh, where I've seen them lately is every year at Concordia, they do, they do Night to Shine.
Yeah.
Like prom.
Right.
And usually have a couple there.
Yeah, we're involved with that, I think.
Yeah, at Concordia?
Uh huh. Uh, I think Zion may be going there. Is it like in February, maybe?
Yeah, I don't know what I'm gonna, my mom and I usually do like coat check.
Do you? Okay. Well, maybe we'll see over there.
Yeah, that'd be fun. It's so much fun.
Yeah, that's a, that's a neat, neat thing that you guys do.
I just checked the coats.
Oh.
But I've never seen Tim Tebow there. I hear he usually drops by one every year.
Does he?
Or a couple, but.
Wouldn't that be cool?
Never seen him. I, I would not recognize him if he walked in, honestly.
He's a pretty big guy, so.
That's all I would probably know. I'd be like, that person could play football.
Right.
Let's see, we've got all the nominating committee members here. So we'll be able to start at six. Oops. The live stream is streaming.
Start recording.
Thank you. And here's Jacob. So in about 30 seconds, Keith, you can, uh, call this committee to order and open the floor for nominations. We're just opening up the bylaws too, very slowly.
Does Keith do it or?
I'll ask, I'll ask Todd to do it. He's the chairman.
Okay, great. Okay, great, perfect.
Okay. He's, he's gonna do it. He's gonna open up the nominating committee meeting.
Okay, I'll call the roll one. Okay, I actually have six now. So whenever you're ready, Mr. Fagan.
Okay, let's, uh, get started for the planning commission nominating, uh, committee meeting started. Do we need to take a roll call?
Sure, I'll take the roll. Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Hancock? Sandy, it looks like you're muted.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hart? Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, uh, we have met with the, uh, the committee nominate committee. We've talked, discussed uh, phone and online and, uh, our recommendation for this year is for, uh, Keith Taylor to be the chair. The vice chair would be Lou Cunningham and Gary Elliott for the secretary. Are there any questions or concerns about any of those or comments from anyone else on the nominating committee?
Is that a motion, Todd?
Uh, yeah, I guess that would be a motion. That's our recommendation motion for, uh, this year's slate.
I would second it.
And do we need to call a vote for that?
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah, discussion. Now discussion, uh, a vote. Uh, Paula?
Yes.
Okay, and Sandy, hook?
Yes.
Todd Fagan, yes. Uh, any names? So if that's fair, that would be our recommendation and our slate for, uh, the chair, vice chair, secretary position for 2015.
All right, that's great. So then that'll be for the, you, the whole commission will then, uh, address it at your, when you gabble out of this. Um, so if you have no more business, you all can now do a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There we go. So we, do we, uh, stay on and go to the next or come back?
I'm sorry, who, did someone second the motion and then vote on the adjournment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, motion to adjourn.
And Sandy moved.
Seconded. So we just have to vote?
And then all three of you would vote, yes.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, and then, yeah, the four of you can just stay on while we wait for the other, um, members. And then we can, um, start that and we'll just leave the recording as well. That way we'll just have the one recording.
What time is that meeting supposed to start now?
We advertised them both for six just because the nominating committee, uh, is so short. So if we just wanna wait until about 6:10.
Sounds good.
To give the other members a little time.
Thank you.
Mel, and Jacob, this is Keith.
Yes.
If periodically I mute, it's because I've got this off real bad and I
Oh, okay.
do that, so people don't have to hear it.
True. Are you in St. Louis or are you, uh, down south, Keith?
I'm down south and, uh, Carol, yeah, luckily we're not in there, but, but my wi- wife Carol, she's, I've gotta put her on a plane Thursday. She has to attend a funeral. But she's gotta fly home Thursday.
Yeah.
And I hope it's not too bad.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know if it's supposed to snow again or what.
I hope not, because the funeral's Friday.
Yeah, I just don't check anymore. I just look outside.
How much snow did you have at, at your house, Mel?
Oh, I feel like it is probably like 10 inches or something. That's been blowing around, but.
My, my oldest, my oldest son lives down in the city. He's, he thought he had a foot, but I'm like, I don't know.
Jacob, what do you, you shoveled? What did you, what did you experience?
Oh my gosh, I've been shoveling on and off all day today and I.
I had to stop. I couldn't go very long.
I am. While I, while I'm okay right this second, uh, I had to take a little bit of a physical break earlier. And I, I am 100% certain that I am going to be exceptionally sore tomorrow. I don't know, probably eight to 10 inches here in University City. Just, just, uh, you know, within walking distance of the county office. Um, yeah, it's, uh, it's probably the biggest snowstorm, I think, since I've moved to St. Louis. And I moved here about 10 years ago. Or if it's not the biggest, it's pretty close.
Mm hmm.
Did, uh, what, did you have, how much ice did you have underneath on, on, on your drive?
I don't know, maybe like a quarter of an inch, but thankfully, like when I was shoveling today, it was, it would come up pretty easily. So I was able to sort of get underneath of it all and, and sort of, and, and sort of shove it aside. It wasn't all stuck to the, um, to the concrete. So I was able to get it pretty down. It's, it's down to concrete, all the way down the steps, down to the sidewalk. Then I spent my, and then I, you know, I parked my car on the road. Um, so I spent about an hour just before this meeting, um, clearing out my spot, uh, out on, out on the roadway. The plow truck had cleared about one lane's worth. I mean, it's a pretty narrow residential street. It's an old neighborhood. Um, and, um, so it'll be easy to drive and the, and the, once I got the car, but, um, I completely, completely, uh, shoveled out a spot that I can back into and get out of tomorrow. So, um, but it was rea- it was really hard work.
Was it, was it a what heavy snow?
Uh, it was because there was so much sleet, um.
It's heavy.
Yeah, I feel like the first bout, I could like hear it hitting the roof and stuff.
You know, in the bathroom in my house, there's a, uh, skylight. So you could just hear it, um, you know, pelting the, the skylight all day yesterday. And then there was a, there was a lull for several hours, I think in the afternoon-ish. And then in the evening, it, it was all snow again. So, um, yeah, it was, and it was deceptive too, because, um, looking out the window, it doesn't look like a lot. And then, but then when you go out and you start shoveling it, it's, it's a lot. Um, the stairs, like the stairs off the back porch here were all just, you know, completely, completely covered and just looked like a, kind of like a slope. So I've had to, had to do a lot of digging out of stairs and stuff, so. A rough day.
Do you have, you have snow come off your roof right where the stairs are at, right there in the back?
Hmm. No, nothing's come off, nothing now that, but the house does have a pretty, uh, the slant on the roof is pretty. So I mean, snow could sort of fall off, but it's just kind of the blowing of it all. There was a lot of wind too.
Sorry I missed it.
It was pretty to watch. But it'll now be gross from henceforth.
That's it, well.
So.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's gonna warm up too soon.
No, not till Friday. And that, and by warm, I mean that's warm up. It's relative. I think it's supposed to hit 32 on Friday. So Mel, it is about 6:10. How many commissioners do we have, do we have signed on?
Uh, I did see Ms. Williams sign ons. We have a quorum if we can definitely, if it started at 6:10.
Okay.
Wonderful. Abby? You, you, uh, notified everybody. Who was not going to be on the meeting?
Everyone is going to be here today.
Okay.
Should we go ahead and maybe text the people who aren't here and verify that they're coming?
That would be good.
Yeah, I can do that.
We got her shovel in your driveway.
Haven't been outside in two days. Alls I'm doing is cooking.
Oh.
Made spaghetti sauce, chili, bean soup, pot roast, chocolate chip cookies.
You're, you're, you're set for a while, aren't you?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, when can we come over and get some of that? Holy cow.
Come on over.
Wait for someone?
I think we got a couple people there. Three people that are missing.
Chris is gonna hop on now.
Lou said he's logging in now.
Mr. Elliott's trying to hop on right now too.
I'm, I'm working on a, with a hotspot down here, so I hope it stays connected. I'm, I'm working on a, with a hotspot down here, so I hope it stays connected.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. I think we're just waiting for Mr. Elliott now. Is that right?
Okay, uh. Can we go ahead and get started, I guess? I, Gary, I had some problems. All right. Like to, uh, open this January sixth executive board meeting. Um, if I had a gavel, I'd gavel in, but I don't. So if we could, uh, call roll, please.
Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Elliott, Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Bedell.
Here.
Ms. Hart. Ms. Hancock.
Here.
Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have any meeting summaries?
Yes, we have the December executive meeting and public hearing.
The minutes? Okay. So everybody had a chance to look those over and read them? Uh, do we have any discussion? Do we have any corrections? On those minutes? If not, can I have a, a motion for approval of the minutes?
Okay.
There is a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, now we have the, uh, St. Louis County Commission status sheet from August fifth through December twenty-four. And has everybody had a chance to take a look at that? At the summaries? And the status sheet? Everybody had a chance to take a look at those? There any questions or concerns? Can I get a, a motion for approval?
So move.
Has there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes? Eyes have it. Now we're moving on to, uh, committee reports. Nominating committee. Uh, with the chair, Todd Fagan, please, uh, give us a report, please.
Yes, thank you, Keith. Uh, the nominated committee, committee of myself, Paula Hart, Katie Hancock. Uh, we have proposed a slate of Keith Taylor as chair. Luke Cunningham as co-chair, Gary Elliott as secretary. Uh, brought that in a meeting before this executive meeting and went ahead and voted upon that. And it was unanimous three-zero, but that is a recommendation for the, uh, the eldest position for the twenty-twenty-five.
All heard the recommendation of the nominating committee? Uh, is there any questions, concerns? If not, could I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Eyes have it. And our new, uh, commission officers would be myself, uh, as chair. Luke Cunningham as vice chair and Gary Elliott as secretary for the year twenty-twenty-five. Thank you very much, committee and your support. And we look, uh, to have a, a very good year this year. Uh, no committee on a whole report. And we're gonna go right to new staff introductions. Are we going to do that now or you want to do, do that later?
We will postpone those since we did not have our new staff members physically in the office today. The county was closed today. So, um, but just for a sneak peek, tomorrow will be, uh, Bennett Anderson's first day. He will be our new planning technician. He will be serving in the role that was formerly held by Evelyn Bush and a lot of the duties done by Debbie Nesbit, who the planning commission probably just wasn't as familiar with. We will also have our new office supervisor starting Marilyn Beck. Um, she formerly, formerly was the legislative assistant to Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway, who just finished up a term on the council. Um, I just want to note that I see Mr. Elliott has joined the meeting. Um, in addition, we are having an, uh, a section that was formerly in Public Works. The Office of Zoning Enforcement is going to move into the Department of Planning, is moving into the Department of Planning right now. Um, so those staff members, Amber Mahelchik and Joan Holtzman will also introduce themselves or we'll have introductions for them, um, when we do present that to the commission. So something to look forward to.
What's the person's name that is, that, that used to work for Kelly Dunaway?
Her name is Marilyn Beck.
And she'll be the, the manager?
She'll be the office supervisor. So the role formerly held by Anita Johnson, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Are, are basically our sole administrative, um, position in the department. Our superhero.
All the staff are superheroes.
That's true. Another superhero in the.
That's right. We'll have another superhero.
Yeah. So we're really excited.
Is there any more person excited more than Abby?
I think Abby will be most excited when we get a new land use manager, which will be occurring in twenty-twenty-five. That's when I think she'll be the happiest.
Yes, but Bennett will be calling you for, for public hearing this week. So, yeah, I'm totally excited.
So is, um, Joan Holtzman coming in full-time or part-time?
Joan is, um, technically, she is a retiree, so she's intermittent. Um, so she's, she basically does half-time.
Okay, so I do know Joan from the nineties. Yeah, being, uh, she was zoning, yeah, on the sixth floor, so.
Is, um, I think the longest-serving county employee of all time. I, I'm.
I don't know if it's the all-time, she's gotta be in the top ten.
That she, I mean, like, she's still so young, but the lore is that she started when she was seventeen.
Oh, seven, I was gonna say eighteen, but yeah.
So she's a legend.
Yes, she is.
She's wonderful.
Yes, she is. So we're very, we're very excited for Amber and Joan, uh, to be coming in, so.
So yes, I anticipate, um, maybe not next week, but probably the February meeting, we will do those introductions.
That's good. Sounds good. Um, Gary, you just joined us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to let you know that you have been nominated and voted to, uh, retain your position as secretary.
Okay, thank you all.
Uh, with that, uh, let's go to our new business.
All right, good evening, commissioners. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. We have the PC thirty-six dash twenty-four Jessica Pfeifer.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. This is PC thirty-six dash twenty-four Jessica Pfeifer. Uh, this is a request for a change in zoning from C-eight plan commercial district to R-three residence district to reutilize the existing single-family residence on the site. Uh, this is a two-point-nine-nine acre tract on the northeast corner of Dunn Road, west of Jerry's Lane. And this is coming to you as a letter of recommendation. So this site is in North County and on the aerial is bounded in red. Um, on this larger aerial, you can see similar single-family homes all down Jerry's Lane. Um, and to the east is undeveloped land in association with Village North, a retirement. So for the purposes of review, PC thirty-six dash twenty-four Jessica Pfeifer is a request for changing zoning from C-eight plan commercial district to R-three residence district to utilize the existing single-family home. The site was zoned C-eight plan commercial district in nineteen ninety-four in association with proposed medical offices, but this use has never developed. And this single-family home has existed on the property and has been vacant since before that petition. So the department is recommending approval of this request.
You've heard the department's recommendation of approval. Do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
And a motion?
Do we have any questions or concerns on this, uh, recommendation? Well, if not, those, uh, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Eyes have it. And next we have PC thirty-seven dash twenty-four Joe Badino.
Good evening, commissioners. PC thirty-seven dash twenty-four Joe Badino is a request for a change in zoning from R-two to R-three residence districts for the purpose of single-family residences on a tract size of four-point-four-three acres, located in the south side of, of Old Baumgartner Road at Main Burn Road. And this is coming to you tonight as letter of recommendation. From the county context map, subject site located in the south county and to the right of the screen is subject site outlined in red. And this is a larger aerial site, um, some, most of the surrounding sites have been zoned out to, but give all other go into process of change in zoning and they have been zoned out to residential streets, develop single-family residences via PEU. The petitioners are requesting a change in zoning from out to, to out resident district. So subdivide the tracks into nine lots to develop single-family homes. Um, four out of these nine, four out of nine houses will have access via the existing cop courts on Old Baumgartner Road. While the other five will have access via a proposed extension of the stop streets, which is the pin oak terrace courts to form a pool. The sack, the existing single-family home will remain on the site. Department is recommending approval because the sites and motor surrounding areas were zoned out to residence district nineteen sixty-five. And a significant amount of land have been subject to changes in zoning to R-three residence districts to allow development of higher densities, single-family residential subdivisions via the PEU procedure. And, um, the R-three residence district zoning is appropriate at the location and consistent with good planning practice. The proposed residential development is stable at the site. The traffic that will be generated by the four houses using the assets on Old Baumgartner Road could be safely handled on the section of the road between Melbourne and Old Baumgartner Road. Um, as long as development forms, conforms to the county's standard.
Okay, I think.
Yeah, I'm for it. I asked, request for motion, so.
Keith, I see you're unmuted, but I don't hear you. No. Um, Mr. Cunningham, do you think you could call for a motion while Mr. Kaler's? Working on his.
Here we go.
Oh wait.
Are you there? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, so there was a recommend, recommendation for approval. Do we have a motion?
Oh, move.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns?
I mean, uh, this is Sandy. I have a question. So did, did we say that there is homes there now that are gonna remain? Or the homes there now gonna be torn down?
There is one single, existing single-family on the site and the said at the public hearing that's gonna remain on the site.
But it's that, wait, well, just lot one. But there's barn there that will be torn down, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Got it. I remember this. Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question. And I can, I'm not seeing that on here. Will they be putting a sidewalk all the way around this site?
Um, yes, it's part of the, um, recommendation from the Department of Transportation and Planning. If at all, they develop it to be single-family homes.
Okay.
So during the plating process, because this does not have a PEU ordinance that's going along with this, this would be a straight zoning subdivision, but other, but other policies of the county will require that a sidewalk is as a part of this development through the plating and development process.
Very, very good. Thanks, Jacob. Uh, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes? Eyes have it. Motion approved. Next.
PC thirty-eight dash twenty-four GCI Crown Imperial LLC is a request for the amended developments in the M-three and FPM-three industrial district for the purpose of battery energy storage system on a track size of ten acres located in the south side of Baumgartner Road, west of Baumgartner Industrial Drive. From the county context map, subject site located in the south county and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. And this is a larger area. The subject site is surrounded by industrial development. The pensioners are requesting amended developments in the M-three plant industrial district and FP, and FCM-three plant industrial, floodplain plant industrial district to permit a battery energy storage system. The battery energy storage system will be connected to the Amarin substation, to the nuts of the site across Baumgartner Road. And the personnel stated that projects would be installed using modern technologies to promote safety and reliability. If the previous development plan presented at the public hearing, it shows the battery storage system surrounded by twenty-four foot wide dustproof access road. And it is bordered by drainage swill. Um, it also shows that there's gonna be two, two cop courts from along Baumgartner Road and no sign of fences, no landscaping were proposed on the sites. Department is recommending approval because the M-three plant industrial district procedure is appropriate for the development of the site that has been owned to an industrial use. The development conditions inherited the M-three plant industrial district to ensure the proposed development is compatible surrounding uses and ensure reasonable improvements to the site. The proposed use of the tracks are reasonable and appropriate at the site and surrounding permitted developments. Some of the, some of the visions that we'd like to see on site development plan is, the department is recommending once, one access, one access to the site via, um, along Baumgartner Road. All itana drive shall be paved. It's twenty-four foot wide buffer yard is required in the eastern and western setback, planted as required by the zoning ordinance. If you've seen foot buffer yard is required along the Baumgartner Road, planted as required by the zoning ordinance, screening shall be provided at the eastern limits of the M-three. And all proposed fences shall be decorative. No barbed wire is permitted. All asphalt and gravel on the site shall be removed and unusable sources of the sites shall be returned to the natural states. And at this time, I request for a motion.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the, uh, department. Do we have a motion for approval?
A motion for approval.
Is there a second? That being said, do we have any questions or concerns about this, uh, PC?
Is, is Amarin feeding the battery?
Is, is Amarin feeding the battery station here or is the station feeding to Amarin?
I'm, I'm ready to go into. Wait, it's.
My understanding is that it's a backup for the traditional substation that's on the north side of the street.
Okay.
So, I don't know how the batteries get loaded up necessarily, but I think the intention is for them to be the backup for the traditional.
Right.
On the north side.
So, my understanding is, is that those batteries are, are tied into the electric system, um, which then keeps them charged, and then at any time during a, um, power outage or, or, or low power in that vicinity, that battery storage system can then be used to, uh, provide power for up to, I think it was up to four hours for 10,000 homes. Um, that, that power equivalent would be stored at this site.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. And on to, we don't have any old business. We're, or do we have anything with the, uh, PC 28-24? No, we don't. Site plans. Very good.
We do expect to bring that one back to the Planning Commission next week. I know it's been not ready for action for a little bit, but there's been a little bit of progress.
Flower and Fenner, are they coming back next week? Are they gonna be?
Uh, those go together. Uh, so they'd be together, yeah.
All right. We're still working on that, I'm remaining. Okay. Uh, site plan. PC 95-05.
Good evening, PC 95-05 SSM Healthcare St. Louis is a C8 Plan Commercial District governing a 54.10 acre tract on the northwest corner of Bowles Avenue and Highway 141. This is site development plan for approval this evening. This site is in the southern portion of West County, and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. The plan shows a new 20 by 20 regulator building, um, to be used by Spire Energy. The building is accessed via a new internal access easement. It's located at the southeastern corner of the site, near the intersection of 141 and Bowles. So, north is to the left on this plan. The Commission will recall recommending approval of an ordinance amendment, um, to allow the building in this location. And this is an architectural rendering of the building. And the department is recommending approval.
Heard the, uh, department's recommendation of approval. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
There's a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns? If not, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it, and it, that is approved. Go to the order.
So, the only thing I think that we had on here was a, uh, a brief update on where we are for the comprehensive plan. Is that correct, Mel?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, the town, we had our, uh, open houses back in December, um, or was it November?
November.
November, right.
It was November. It was no, well, November.
That's right. Um, back in, in November, um, and we've also had online, we've had, we've had the open houses available online for the last couple of weeks, and the online, uh, portion remains open for an additional week, uh, soliciting, um, views and perspectives from residents online. So, when that, that will close and we are working to create a report of the findings from the open houses, and, uh, as we move forward, moving from draft recommendations to putting together the draft plan with AE Comp. So, when we get a little bit closer to some timelines on that, we will come back to this Commission and let you all know and, and make sure that we have, um, also plenty of time for you all to review it. In fact, I was chatting with Paul Weatherford today about, um, when the Comprehensive Planning Committee meets later this month. One of the things it is, we're getting close to is that committee, um, telling us how it would like and how much time it would like, um, to have the draft plan, um, with the, with the Commission before we make the ultimate recommendation to the council. So, we are, um, moving along and continue to, uh, have a goal of, um, a recommendation for the comprehensive plan coming out of the Commission sometime in late spring, so that, uh, in early summer, early to midsummer, the council can hopefully, uh, pass an ordinance adopting that plan.
I have a question. So, uh, Jacob, do you know if anybody has been responding online?
Yes, um, I think we've got close to, uh, 50 responses from our online. Is that, I think that's about right. We're, we're, um, up to our online.
It's like mid-thirties.
Oh, okay, so we've got about thirty-something, thirty-something responses to the online.
But we're still, um, we're gonna do another, like, a LinkedIn push, so. Or, but I know that you're a LinkedIn pro, so that would be a good thing for you to, uh, repost.
And I know the county, uh, the County Executive's Office put out a press release about it. I think it was two we, it was like two weeks ago, they put out a press release about it. Um, so we've had that up now for a couple of weeks, and coupled with the really strong in-person, uh, engagement that we received, we've gotten a lot of really great feedback.
I mean, let me ask you this. Uh, and this may sound like a really odd question. Does St. Louis County employees know about this comp plan? Cause I'm gonna say some people I know don't.
Well, I would hope.
In your building with you.
Sure, I would hope so. Um, we do have, um, at, on multiple screens inside of the building. Uh, there have been, there are almost on a daily basis. I know there, that kinda rolls through on, on various information screens that all county staff have access to. Um, additionally, department heads, I, I do keep department, uh, directors, um, constantly informed, um, of where we are. Um, so I would, I would definitely hope that it has been slowly over time trickling through, uh, to, to our workforce as well.
I don't know. You may need to get with the department directors again to push that down to their employees because some people don't know.
No, understood. I appreciate, I appreciate that feedback.
Be a good medium to share with county employees too, right now.
Yeah.
So, I've noted that.
Maybe we can, well, Mel, let, we can, um, talk about it tomorrow at the office as to whether we can do a, a, a push for perhaps a county staff push on this.
Uh, Jacob, I got a, just a, a question on, on this, and it's only because of what's just happened in the last, uh, week. And it's kinda regards when all we're seeing on is public safety, what had happened down in New Orleans. And, and through our comprehensive plan, how much did we ever talk about public safety?
So, during the.
Big part, and, and I guess the other question is, how big a department does the county have for public safety?
Well, that's a, it's a really, that's a really big question. So, I mean, when you look at the county's budget, our single largest really, um, line item is our public safety budget, as expressed through, um, our funding of St. Louis County Police Department and other general, um, agencies that, that deal with public safety are the court system. Um, so we do, we do invest as a, as a government, a fair amount into public safety. When we did the, um, when we did the, the, some of our early outreach about asking people about existing conditions, about how they were feeling about public, about public safety, that was a question that we asked, um, throughout our survey and that we heard from residents, um, about how their, how their perceptions are of public safety, which, um, came out in some of our, and our, our survey results, we, you know, we found sort of a disparate sort of feeling on public safety, um, throughout St. Louis County. Um, I don't think anything is too particularly, um, surprising to hear that folks who live sort of out in West County and South County feel a little bit more about their public safety is secure, whereas residents who are residing in North St. Louis County feel, uh, less secure about the public safety situation in the county. Um, and that was mirrored in our survey results. Um, so we are, this is a, um, a plan that looks to create a built environment that overall improves public safety, but it's not, it's not necessarily a plan in which, you know, the police department are going to take as sort of an actionable sort of, oh, this is how we manage large groups, or how, this is how we, um, you know, do something of that nature. It's more about a long-range vision for how to, um, create a built environment that promotes public safety in, uh, big and small ways.
So, so I guess, I guess you answered my question. When it comes to public safety, there is no real public safety department?
Besides the police department by and large, that is, um, but no, the county does not have a public safety department. Um, we, we sort of, when we look at the budget, the way that we sort of just put things together when it comes to how we fund public safety, is it's gonna be the police department, municipal courts. Um, I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at the budget, how else we, um, code sort of the monies that go towards public safety. Um, but a very, very, the, the largest proportion of county, of the county budget goes towards the funding of our public safety agencies.
Basically, the county police is what you're saying.
A lot of it, yes.
Okay, well, thank you. I just was, just had a question about that. I don't know if every, every city and every county run about the same way or, or not, or, or if these other municipalities have a public safety actual department.
That's an interesting question, and I can't speak for all, for all local governments. Um, a lot of bigger cities, um, do have an overarching sort of like public safety director that, that kind of helps oversee the, the, the whole sort of constellation of public safety, um, departments and sort of agencies. Um, but it's not universal. It's really just dependent and, and contextually, uh, dependent upon what, what area in the country and the community.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. And anything else? When we go to the, or does anybody else have anything? Very good. Well, I'd like to move, uh, looking for a motion for adjournment of this, uh, executive board meeting.
I'm moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nay? Nay? Ayes have it, and we will see everybody, uh, next week.
Next week in person, with 7:00 PM.
Person, 7:00 PM.
Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.
Have a good one. Stay safe. Stay safe out there in the snowstorm. Bye now.
So, I think I'm gonna hit end stream on the YouTube. But I don't think I need to do anything here. Thank you very much.